I'll call the meeting to orders. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. June fourteenth, meeting of the county commission. First of all, some public comments. We have some public comments.
I'm Paul in Good Pasture, and I live out on eighty-two seventy-three Garfield Road. And we have a real issue out there with that road.
I might give you the document.
We have talked to Mr. Falk, and I know for a fact that Jeremy's caught talking to Mr. Bale. But it's like, we can't get anything done. The road keeps washing out on both sides. Do driveways need some culverts or something?
And a couple months ago, when I was home, Jeremy had talked to Tim Bell, and he had Steve Marlat come out while I was home and assess the road. And when they got done, nothing was said, and we've been waiting to see what happens, which I understand Phil Falk has had an accident, and he can't maintain the road. I get that. Problem is, ever since he's taken over from our last guy, our road's been washing out, and it's gotten to the point that I have a Suburban that literally bottomed out the other day coming out of my drive and almost ripped the exhaust off. My son's in the process of putting a home in down the road, and the concrete trucks cannot come in now because of the way the road is washed into the center, that they're refusing to come in to pour the concrete for his home. So we're kind of in a bind at this point, that he's going to be making mortgage payments for a home that he can't have in there at this point, because we can't get this road taken care of. Now, my husband's worked for Road and Bridge. He worked for him for over ten-plus years. So, you know, we weren't upset that Falk hadn't been out there to work on it. He's been trying to do what he can with the equipment we have, but the problem is, we don't have gravel anymore to even work the road anymore, because no one's been out there. And I know in the past, when I talked to Bill personally and asked him to get some gravel, he comes back kind of harsh and snappety, and he's on the Shannon Fire Department, so my husband talks to him every single month, and his attitude is, "I'll assess the road, but I'm not doing it today, and I probably won't do it next week." So, we have yet to see him for the last few months, and this is what we're dealing with. So, we're coming to you guys today to see if there's something that can be done, because like I said, it's literally holding up my son's home now.
This is township road, correct?
Yes, Shannon Township.
Shannon Township.
I don't think we can do anything. I've always been told if it's a township road, defer to the township.
And we have, and that's why we're coming to you, because we have.
Get nothing out of it.
Which, maybe now that you're on a public county meeting, I mean, I could share this link with both Tim Bell and and Mr. Falk, so they can hear your complaints and that you were here in front of the county commission, but as far as action on a township road, and Les Pat tells me different, I don't believe we can do anything.
You don't have any supervisory control?
Well, we're to the point now about passing a petition to have him removed from being the road grader for Shannon Township, because we have not seen him, literally before his accident, we have not seen him for almost a year. We are the last to get serviced, our road's the last one to get bladed, and what's aggravating is that their shop is literally up the top of our rep.
Less than two blocks.
Yes. So it is very aggravating, but it's gotten worse when we can't move a home in. And we keep getting the runaround from them, and that's why we're coming to you.
Well, I appreciate you coming. Again, there's nothing we can do, but I know a lot of the townships with all this rain that we've had, it's a struggle, because every road washed in these last few weeks with all the rain, but I...
Well, we have no tubes.
Something just come up.
Yeah, this has been a battle since he's taken over from Rayfield. This has been a battle ever since. We never, I've been there for twenty-six years, and we've never had this problem. We've always had a well-maintained road until he's taken over, and then it's went downhill. As you can see in some of those photos, you will see old tubes that used to be there that no longer exist. So, any help you can possibly give us would be great. If you can nudge them or let them know that we're voicing our concern, that'd be great.
When you said it was Tim Bell?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because the only one that's maintained right now has been JJ.
Jerry, this is his nickname.
Okay. If it wasn't for him using the Macko out there, we wouldn't have the road.
I'll try to get him a call.
Yeah, and I'd appreciate it.
I'll also call them both after the meeting.
Thank you. And if you guys couldn't even reach out, maybe, and find out what they decided with Steve Marlat, that'd be great, because I think they were looking at possibly putting tubes in, but we have not...
You're contracting with Marlat?
That's what they were looking at doing, and we have not heard anything, and we've tried reaching out to Tim. Jeremy called last week, left a voicemail, have yet to hear back. Bill's truck was at the top of the hill at the shop we stopped in, could not reach him. Jeremy was able to reach him at the fire meeting, and that's when he came back and said, "Well, I'll be out that way, but it's not going to be today, and it's not going to be next week. When I get there, I get there." So...
I know that's frustrating, but unfortunately, that's life for the contractors.
So, yes.
So...
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Do everything we can. Okay, next up is the minutes. Have you had a chance to read the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes, I would make a motion to.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes. As written, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's a three to zero. Commissioner's comments and committee reports. Casey?
I just wanted to say thank you to our Atchison County Safety Committee for putting on the Stop the Bleed. Our EMS Captain George Duff trained county staff on how to stop excessive bleeding last week, and I was fortunate enough to be able to take his training, and it was, it was great. So, I just would suggest anyone in the county that, if your organization or someone, group of few want to learn or take his class, to reach out to Corey Scott at EMS, because Captain Duff does do that for local organizations as well. I have an EDAG meeting tomorrow at four o'clock. Sorry, yeah, tomorrow, Wednesday at four o'clock. Website redesign meeting tomorrow at ten AM, and then yesterday I met, I invited the city manager and city clerk to come to the courthouse to discuss the joint communications resolution. So, those two, as well as Justin Prajean, came up and met with our financial director and joint communications director, and we sifted through the joint communications resolution and just kind of had some informative discussions back and forth and a chance to kind of pick the new city manager's brain on that. So, infancy stages, but that's what I've been up to, so.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Okay, I don't have anything today either. Corey Scott, is he on the ambulance lease purchase opening? It's unusual, he must be on the call. Wasn't it just for the lease purchase financing? Yes, for that. It'll be necessarily... Okay.
Looks like we received two bids. The first one is from First Option Bank out of Troy. Interest rate is two point nine seven percent with a semi-annual payment of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and eleven cents. Absolutely, twenty-three thousand nine thirty-five eleven cents. You're welcome. Give me the interest rate.
Two point nine seven.
This one is from Exchange Bank and Trust for two point zero nine percent interest for a payment, semi-annual payment of twenty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. This one is from GN Bank out of Horton. Interest rate is two point nine four percent with a semi-annual payment of twenty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars even, and then it has estimated in parentheses.
Okay, that's all the bids.
Yes.
So, we'll wait for Corey to come back with a recommendation.
I don't know if there's anything really that he would add to it, because we've done enough of these before. We've done business with Exchange Bank as the parent.
So, could make a motion to give the Exchange Bank for two point zero nine percent.
I'd second that.
It's been moved and accepted, seconded to accept Exchange National Bank. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's a three to zero. Carrot purchase approval.
So, this purchase order is just for the Portland compensation that the county does. It's our bill for the second half of twenty twenty-two. What's, I'm sorry?
Previous?
Yes.
So, this is just, this is half of that?
That's the second, the second installment.
Okay, forty-two thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars, Stephen, to Mid-America Regional Council. Any questions? I hear a motion to... So...
I don't think that's right. Yeah.
Yes, so it's Carrot Mid-America Regional Council.
Oh, well, that was interesting, because this morning we talked about the other one, so I'm glad that they said that. Okay, perfect. I'll second that.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's a three to zero.
Thank you.
Somebody else? Oh, no, that's, I'm sorry, that's for... And next up, Christina Rowland, our health officer discussion.
Yeah.
Please.
Hello. And I submitted a request, a written request, to appoint Megan as the interim health officer. So, you guys, as you most know, she has been with the Health Department for a long time. She did all the COVID work, so she's definitely well-equipped to handle that position, and we're just here for any questions you might have.
I'm going to approve the appointment.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I have zero doubt that you will not do a fantastic job.
You're so glad. Thank you.
And what's the, then, the timeline for finding a replacement? It's just for the public's com, I mean, is there one? I mean...
Well, we haven't put out an ad for a supervisor to come in. Right now, we're trying to get a clerk hired. I think I've received a hundred emails of resumes. There's a ton to sort through, and so then we'll talk about the next steps to getting someone in that job.
Okay. Feel free to contact me anytime you need.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, I have we need to approve for Shelley Nelson with the PISP and juvenile pay.
Compensation adjustment.
Yeah, compensation adjustment. That is a one-time adjustment. This is from KDOC on both sides. And then do I hear a motion to approve the adjustment?
I'll make a motion to approve an adjustment in the amount of forty-six thousand six ninety-four seventy-two to bring Atchison County wages up to a competitive rate based on the state's recommendations.
Second? I'll second it. We should have some discussion. Okay. Discussion?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that this is based upon a state recommendation, and not everybody in the state receives this. This is a based upon the salaries that were in place here in Atchison, and they needed to be increased. Not only are they going to get this one-time compensation, but they're also going to get a pay raise in accordance to state recognition.
Yeah, this is to broaden them up to the state's recommended salary ranges. So, it's been moved to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's a three to zero. The council updates.
Well, we have a couple of things. The first one there was the bond resolution.
Yes, and David Bartber is here to talk about that today, too.
Okay, so I would defer to him.
Good afternoon. I've got a couple of handouts for you. You might have seen these before, but take one and pass down. Today, would represent the final step that the commission would need to take to authorize the issuance of bonds for the road improvement projects. And so what I wanted to do is, before we talk about the resolution you have in front of you, just kind of go through with you what we've been up to since we were last here and sort of the results of the offering of the bonds. First of all, shortly after we were here a few weeks ago, Mark distributed to both bidders in town and around the state and around the country this term sheet that you'll see, which is outlines the bond issue, the structure of it, how it's paid, what the purpose of it is for, and includes on the back of it a section where you could actually submit a bid for the, for the bonds. So, Mark sent that out, and then the bids were due on the first of June. And you can see on the other sheet, the bid tabulation, these are the bids that we ended up getting on the box. I got a total of four bids, which I was really pleased to see. The best bid, the purchaser that was offering to buy the bonds at the lowest interest rate was submitted by Signature Bank, and their interest rate was three point one zero five zero percent. I think last time I was here, I was estimating about three point six, so a little bit less than we expected. I have to tell you, since we took bids on the first, particularly yesterday and on Friday, rates have jumped up quite a bit. If you were to take bids today, I would expect it would be at least a quarter of a percentage point higher than, than what you've got here. So, the timing of that seemed to work out. We coordinated with Signature Bank and made sure that their bid sort of complied with all of the requirements, and they, it did, and we made sure we got the interest rates all incorporated into the resolution that you had. So, the final step then would be for the commission to adopt the red, the bond resolution that officially authorizes the issuance of the bonds, locks in this interest rate, and the issue will then close. I think we've got it scheduled for June twenty-ninth, so that's the date that you'd actually get the delivery of the funds. So, that's kind of what we've been up to. Obviously, welcome any questions you might have about the market, the process, the results, any of that.
I appreciate all the expertise you've given us throughout the process in explaining it with, with the calendar and the timelines and what to expect. So, you've made it easy to understand, and it was nice to... What we were counting on was higher than what we actually got, so that's always a good thing, so.
Yeah, I won't comment about what it might have looked like when we first got here, because that was about to happen to the market since then, right? But it is good since we last here, and that will better.
Thank you.
I would comment, the whole world has changed since we first started talking. It is probably going to change the world. And we had, we're taking this real serious, because we're borrowing money in a very crucial economic time. And I just want to say that, as a commissioner, I want to make sure the money's spent in the most prudent way with someone. And I think that's real important, because our indebtedness to we bonds and lease purchases, about eight percent of our total, and more of tax bill. So, it's a substantial number. But I'm going to support it, because I think we need to move forward, especially with inflation and getting some of these projects completed.
Yeah, I'll agree with that, and, you know, the interest rates going up, but, you know, when you look at what it costs for a project to postpone them, you're, you're going to be losing a lot of your buying power if, if we put it off too long. So, there's different ways of looking at it, and I hate high taxes as much as the next person, but some of these things, we've got to get some bricks on, on these projects.
Well, and we're going to deploy about eight hundred thousand dollars if we do, when we see the funds. Projects for right now, and the balance of redeploy is a twenty twenty-three, so we should start seeing some real differences. So, we did this with bridges. We were able to build eight or ten bridges. I don't remember in about two years, which really made a difference, so.
Okay, so is it time for the...
Yeah, just consider adoption of the resolution, blocking, blocking the interest rates and officially, like I said, authorize the issuance.
It's not a public hearing? It's a public hearing on this subject?
Is that what it is?
No, there's no public hearing.
Public hearing, but it's just...
Yeah.
In accordance with the paper in front of me, I will declare that we have a quorum, and I'll call this meeting to order, and the resolution will be a resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation bonds Series twenty twenty-two dash A of Atchison County, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said bonds as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith. Do I have to call for vote?
May I defer to our county councillor to ensure you review this. We're good to, to move forward.
Yes, you, you also have bond cancer. We prepared it, but, yeah, absolutely, we reviewed it.
Did you make a motion? Well, that's why I was going to call for...
Perfect.
I'll second.
Hold on, did you make the motion?
No, I was going to call for a motion, so.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Well, thank you, and just as you know, Pat and Mark and Michelle were all really helpful in this process to make it run smoothly and talk to bidders and get everything set, done, taken care of, so appreciate that, too.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This would be resolution for sale of county property.
There are two. Did you have resolution number fifteen, fifteen oh four?
That's my next one.
So, that resolution you just did is fifteen oh three.
I mean, that's, I didn't know, because they didn't number it.
We didn't say, right, so I wanted to make...
Just making sure, too.
Going back, yeah.
So, twenty twenty-two, fifteen oh four, okay.
So, as you know, we had two parcels of property that were advertised for invitations for, for bids, for, and we had a sealed bid auction last week, and the successful bidders were Wanderlust LLC, which was Andrew Waring, this person who made the bid on behalf of the limited liability company, and JR Denton Land LLC, Roger Denton, this person who made the bid on behalf of that limited liability company. As part of the title insurance process, they wanted to have a resolution that authorized the sale of the land that's not required by title standards, that's required by underwriting, so that's the reason for these resolutions. And so I there was one change that was made, and that was simply the in the last paragraph, last numbered paragraph, it had cost of recording included in that. I, I wasn't sure whether we paid cost of recording when we conveyed land. I knew we didn't require land, but we do not pay them when we convey land either, so I took that reference out. So, in both situations, I may not have emailed a big resolution.
Yeah, the only one I got was the twenty fourteen, fourteen hundred that you referenced in the email, but I don't think I...
That resolution's... But I should address that. Atchison County has adopted a resolution several years ago on disposition of surplus property. There is a state statute on disposition of surplus property by counties, and it provides a mechanism, if the county has not adopted a different mechanism, through that resolution, Atchison County adopted a different mechanism. And regarding real estate such as this, it's just simply says whatever the commission decides to do, how the commission directs to, to sell property is the way that you should go. I was asked the question about Roger Denton, of course, is an employee, part-time employee of Atchison County, who's been a valuable member of our team for, for many years. But the question was asked whether or not a county employee is allowed to bid at the sales, and the answer is clearly yes. The resolution we adopted, or board adopted is explicit that county employees may bid if there's competitive, if there's competitive auction. So, that would be different, maybe, if you had a yard sale and someone set a price, and which you could do that to get rid of personal property, for example, but employees probably shouldn't be able to, to purchase of those, but as long as it's a competitive process there that gets rid of concerns about price fixing or things like that, because everybody's on the same footing about how much to bid or whether to bid on any property. So, I would recommend the adoption of both resolutions, one for the sale of Quick Ref R two four one four, which is the corner lot here, and then the other one for the Quick Ref eighty-three eighty-four, which is, has no assigned address, now, I'm sure.
I would make a motion to approve resolution R two four one four for Wanderlust LLC.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes, three to zero. Resolution passes three to zero.
And just for clarification, I think the resolution number would be fifteen oh five.
And then the next one will have a fifteen oh six?
Yes.
Right here, motion for resolution fifteen oh six.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution. R eight three eight four, or for the sale of property, eight three eight four. Roger Dutton Land Company, LLC.
For a second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. That's a three to zero.
They're for all three, the resolutions for all three signatures.
I just wanted to say thanks, Pat, to, for explaining the resolution twenty fourteen fourteen hundred, because inconsistency is key and. At our April twelfth meeting, we had a county employee bid on the twelve foot snow blade and, and was questioned. With the commissioner voting no, so it's nice to stay consistent and know that county employees are absolutely able to, to bid as long as. There's been processing. Everybody's treated the same, so thank you.
And it's a blind process, I mean.
You still have inside information.
The blind process where it's sent in and the clerk holds the blind bid until. It gets opened in front of the public, so I have no problem with the process whatsoever.
Is there any executive session?
Public comment again?
Motion to adjourn at one thirty two.